Good evening, I will call the May Council Meeting to Order. Welcome to those here this evening, council members and those joining us at home. First item of business is the Call to Order followed by Roll Call. Looks like all the persons all have been checked in as present, thank you for being here. Item three is the Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer, so please stand followed by silent prayer. Move into vacation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item four is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, which is attachment number one. Council members, what are your wishes regarding the minutes? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes. Next item on the agenda is item five is the explanation of the visitor speaking procedure. Those individuals wishing to address the body may do so after being recognized by a council member, in which you'll have five minutes to address the body on a subject that is on our agenda this evening. Please be sure to hit the push button on the microphone so you're picked up for River Cities Community Access, they're taping. Next item on the agenda is item six is my report, members of the council, staff, residents. I've got a little bit of a lengthy update this month, so bear with me. My intention, as I do every month, is to pull items from my calendar over the course of the month, just to give a snapshot of some of the higher level items that I've been working on. First item is the Wisconsin Rapids Retail. Recently, I had the much anticipated opportunity to meet with the ownership of the Rapids Mall. Beyond sharing the most obvious concerns about the property specifically internally and externally, we also provoked a dialogue much about its future. While we all have hopes about what it could be and what maybe it should be, there is realistic action that can be taken now to better position itself for a more positive economic standing. With commitments from the owners and making the overdue improvements to the property, making it much more presentable to current and future tenants, we also discussed other actionable items both the mall ownership, management, and city can take. Considerations given to the former Yonkers space, parking, and outlots were discussed. Active marketing and management is a critical component to restoring vibrancy to the property, and they plan to make changes accordingly. As we move forward, building on our first contact and some of the more subsequent contact just in the last number of days, which I hope is part of a much more regular dialogue, we can effectively market the vacant spaces there as opportunity to fill in gaps that might exist in our retail offering here in the community. The recent closure of Staples is part of a much larger national repositioning, we now have another significant contributor to our supply, and we must work to identify those gaps and make contacts in the retail space who can meet those gaps. Further identifying leakage and consumer spend of our market trade area will serve as a foundation for our work ahead. On a related note, I took the opportunity to attend two days of the largest retail real estate convention, which provided networking, deal making, and educational opportunities for cities, developers, and retailers. The event provided an opportunity for me to talk with retailers and developers to discuss opportunities for them to do business right here in our city. Establishing these face-to-face contacts and relationships as well as understanding the criteria is critical to a successful strategy. With retail spaces in our city, active marketing is a critical component to restoring the vibrancy to both the vacant and undeveloped properties in our city. In the near future, I'll be working with staff to gather the data to tell the story about gaps and opportunities in our market, and this information will be shared with developers who cite criteria matches our area. As mayor, I will continue to explore ideas and strategies to help address the long-term sustainability of all of our city's retail spaces. I believe that each of our retail spaces are very unique, having different potential, and the city plays an important role in supporting their redevelopment. Further strong community and municipal partnerships are crucial to the success. Startup businesses, last Thursday and Friday, I joined city leaders, visionary entrepreneurs, and investors from around the world for an event called the Challenge Cup organized by Seventeen Seventy-Six. Seventeen Seventy-Six is an organization that connects startup businesses with vital resources they need to grow, from mentorship to public-private connections to capital and media attention. Essentially, it's an incubator, and really an accelerator for business startups. The event sought to bring together individuals from around the world representing various backgrounds and industries to find transformative solutions to challenges in the areas of health, energy, education, and governing processes. The Challenge Cup further reinforced the value of smart cities, the idea that local performance depends not only on a city's endowment, hard infrastructure, but also on availability and quality of knowledge, communication, and social infrastructure. Events such as the Challenge Cup Better establish creative solutions to real-world problems cities like ours face on a daily basis. The Challenge Cup event also included valuable sessions on a tour of Union Kitchen. And Union Kitchen was a food incubator in a former warehouse space that was very no-frills, I would say. The goal was to establish a low-cost, low-risk, full-service kitchen for local businesses to grow and establish their operations, eliminating the need for small businesses to take on much debt, purchase expensive equipment, and sign long-term leases when starting out. The tour was inspiring, I must say, and I think the model would work well for, it works well for those businesses that are participating, not to mention their long waiting list to get in their process, but also elements that could exist right here in our own community as it would be a model for sustainable and a more cost-effective launch for restaurant incubating businesses, not necessarily restaurant, but food manufacturing as well. And the second piece of that was startup government, and the event examined the role of government at the state and the local level, and how we can use policy as we've done with some of our innovation initiatives here. Government can be a true driver of innovation by bringing technology to their communities to bridge technology gaps, increase transparency, and provide essential service in more ways, engaging residents in areas they care about. The goal of this event was to idea-share best practices on how government can be a catalyst for innovation and what government agencies can learn from startups. One such startup relates to a summit that I took part of last fall, which was called Code for America, in which their goal was helping government leverage different technology solutions to solve community challenges. For example, in the simplest form, even creating apps, a government focus for improving citizen engagement. I would say in closing on that subject that cultivating startup activity is crucial to ensuring a strong economic future for our community. Simple solutions that leverage our assets like locally headquartered company Renaissance Learning, who is very tight with their innovation, I must say. Midstate Technical College, K-12 institutions, government and local businesses will help foster a startup ecosystem here. Third subject is on bike routes, new trails and complete streets, a subject that I wrote about in a recent community update, in which earlier this month, the Park and Rec Commission met and had a productive discussion around aspects of the City of Wisconsin Rapids Outdoor Recreation Plan that was approved back in 2012. The plan reviewed our existing park and recreational system in the city, and the two elements of focus at this meeting were the existing Ottawa Gem Trail System and a concept called Complete Streets. Recently, it was reported that Wisconsin climbed five spots to number three in rankings for most bicycle-friendly states. Today, over 20 miles of our trails or routes are designated throughout our city. However, the connectedness to our city parks is lacking. The Commission voted to consider additional recreational routes that connect to city parks and assets throughout the city, and city staff will propose new routes at our next meeting. Additionally, while the city has both separate recreational trails and designated recreational routes, one way to accomplish new routes without actually building new trails is through a concept called Complete Streets. Complete Streets is a term used to describe roadways that are designed and operated to enable safe, convenient, and comfortable access and travel for users of all ages and abilities, including pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. Given the diversity of natural and built environment in our city, flexibility in accommodating all users in different modes of travel is essential to balancing the needs of existing and future residents. Future meeting will further discuss, will aid the further discussion and possible adoption of a program for Wisconsin Rapids, and hopefully, the Public Works Committee will take up something in the future on that subject as well. And on winter, now that is, I think it's safe to say that winter is over for a while, we're still now dealing with the consequences of a hard winter, both expenses, street quality as we've kind of all seen. So be it at the water, sewer utility with running water, or in the street department, the true cost of this winter is becoming much more clear. We have been meeting to discuss how we may need to consider more street maintenance than previously anticipated, for example, and further, will streets need to be reconstructed sooner or than previously anticipated? Additionally, I have joined with my counterparts in with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities and Urban Alliance of Cities to lobby our state legislature and governor to consider aid petitions to the federal government for cities to afford these unanticipated expenses, and more information will be forthcoming on that issue. One proclamation was issued, which was for National Nursing Home Week, May 11th through the 17th, in which our city joins cities in celebrating National Nursing Home Week, which recognizes the incredible work that nursing homes in our area provide and throughout the country do in caring for members of our community. I participated in the kickoff at Strawberry Lane here in our city with the reading of a proclamation and a balloon release, which was captured in the Daily Tribune. And finally, Coffee with the Mayor, my next scheduled Coffee with the Mayor is on Wednesday, June 4th, in which I invite residents, yourselves as alderpersons, to join me at Sophia's Restaurant at 8:30 on June 4th. As always, I welcome the opportunity to meet or discuss any ideas or issues. If you haven't done so yet or are not receiving them, please subscribe to my community update, which is available online, and my office would be happy to distribute that in a paper copy as well. So, there's my lengthy community update. Questions? Alderperson Patrick?
Thank you. Oh my, that's quite a lot. As we were gathering here this evening before the meeting actually began, Alderperson Kellogg was discussing Highway 54 bypass, as was Tom Rayom and a couple others here, and it just kind of got to the point where the questions were being kicked around, how can, and we've asked these before, but I think it's worth bringing up again since you specifically mentioned, you know, the rehabilitation, the reconstruction of streets, and also the potential for pushing up those project plans. Where are we at with the Highway 54 bypass project from your standpoint or from, you know, what we know from the state? And how can us as aldermen, you from the mayor's office, perhaps, you know, city staff, and also other municipalities, Port Edwards, Nacusa, Saratoga, you know, even Beeren would be impacted by this, how can these other municipalities get on board this and help to push this so that we can potentially get this project pushed up, you know, ahead of some other projects that the state may have that they're looking at?
Sure. It's a good question. In fact, the city engineer, myself, and the highway commissioner just met in the last three weeks, I'd say, something like that, Dave, on that subject, because the federal government released the Tiger Grant opportunity again, the federal funding for that. There's a very quick turnaround, in which, because the environmental document has not been done, or environmental impact statement has not been done, the EIS for the project, there's nothing else from a funding standpoint for us to petition the federal government for. However, there was contact, discussion about how do we lobby the state to earmark funding in the next biennial budget, which would then pay for that environmental impact statement? It's what, 800,000 somewhere in there for the entire project? But, you know, we talked about the fact that Right-Away has been acquired, you know, that sort of there has been platted, I should say, and I don't know, Dave, do you have any other comments beyond that in our recent meeting?
There hasn't been anything new coming up lately, like the mayor said, I guess our next step is environmental impact statement, and we'll have to go from there.
Okay. I guess as far as it goes, we had kind of, I had even asked Shane, you know, what would be, what did he believe the impact would be in a city-sponsored petition?
Resolution.
Yeah, resolution, or, you know, getting citizens to sign on board, you know, if it's something that, you know, maybe the city can't really get on top of as, you know, we can't really petition in such a manner perhaps, but maybe if there was a group of concerned citizens or a group of concerned business owners, and perhaps we could make that plea tonight.
That was the next step, actually. And Dave, when we talked with Doug, he had, we had suggested that since the county would be, this would be a county project, because it would involve county highway and that sort of thing, was that they were going to initiate a dialogue with A Street businesses to understand the appetite of whether they're interested or not, because it could cut both ways, at least that's the perception. So, that was actually the piece. So, I mean, if there's a kind of a follow-up with that, we haven't heard anything about when that meeting might happen with the business community that was invited on that subject, but that's, I mean, from what I understand, the previous 54 piece, that was kind of a driver, was what's the business community? I think even from the state standpoint, the business community lobbied for it at Central Wisconsin Days in March, I think is when that was, when we were down in Madison, that was the number one project that was lobbied for in the region, but we didn't have a good sample of the business community today. What's their interest? So, I think that is right in line with what was discussed as an outcome from that meeting.
Okay. I guess I would, you know, just make a plea to the business owners and to the citizens in the community, Wisconsin Rapids, Saratoga, Port Edwards, Nacusa, any of the surrounding greater Southwood County communities, please, this is, you know, this is me, I'm not going to speak for everyone else sitting up here, but by all means, please come forward, start a petition, start, you know, getting a hold of our state representatives, you know, down in Madison, and let's see what we can do to push this thing forward, because there's going to be a need for this. And Dave, what had we discussed in the past by 2020 or 2025? We were looking at critical mass for 8th Street?
Right. The original traffic model that the DOT did, failure would start about 2025. The latest I've heard, because of 2008, traffic has dropped in the state nationwide, so when we were looking at Second Avenue, that concept, it's probably somewhere around 2027 to 2035 that it'll now will get major conflicts on A Street.
Okay. Thank you. That's pretty much all I have, so hopefully we can keep this discussion moving forward in the coming months.
Yeah, I think, I mean, regarding the EIS in itself, that was vetoed in the last budget, so it was inserted, but it was vetoed by the governor, so I think that, I mean, it made it to that stage at least, so that would be a point that your comment about lobbying our state reps is important. All right. Next item on our agenda is item seven, new business. Item A is Mayor Vruwink's appointments to various committees and commissions, see attachment number two. As you can tell, it's a pretty extensive list. I don't see any individuals here this evening that would like to introduce themselves. And with that, what are your wishes regarding those appointments? We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight As and zero As.
Thank you. Item seven B is a resolution naming September 7th as International Migratory Bird Day in the City of Wisconsin Rapids, and that's attachment number three. We've got some individuals here this evening. Did you want to address the body on the subject before us?
Thank you so much for having the committee here. I'm part of a Bird City Committee, which is basically a project of the Citizens for a Clean, Green, and Welcoming Community. It's a grassroots organization that started about five years ago to look at environmental issues concerning our city. This is the second year of naming a date as International Migratory Bird Day, which is a requirement in order for us to be continued as a Bird City. And all of you, I'm sure, as you've entered the city, have seen that beautiful sign that says Bird City on it, and in order to earn that designation, we had to document that we met seven, was it Clara, seven criteria last year, and this is something we have to do every year. So, I think we were before the city council in August of last year, asking if you would approve a resolution designating a date as our celebration for International Migratory Bird Day. This year, we would like to do two, June 7th, which we're doing in conjunction with the Kiwanis Youth Outdoor Day. We felt it was such a great opportunity to introduce young people to the idea of birding that we are joining with them, and we're going to do at the Grand Affair on September 7th, another International Migratory Bird Day, so spring migration and fall migration. So, this resolution is part of our requirement, but also something we look forward to doing as a committee, and hopefully, the community will celebrate with us. So, does anybody have any questions?
Okay, well, thank you for presenting, and thank you for your efforts to bring attention to it through youth, as you mentioned, and through the event this fall. So, council members, what are your wishes regarding seven B?
Move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second, we have a motion to approve and a second, if you could, there we go. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote, please cast your ballots. There we go. Thank you.
Motion carried, eight As and zero As.
Thank you. Item eight, Standing Council Committee Reports. Item eight A, Finance and Property Committee Meeting Held May 6th. Alderperson Stack.
Yes. Good evening to those feeling from home and to the members here at the council meeting and those visiting with us. The Finance and Property Committee had two meetings this month. The first was held on May 6th and reported to the council tonight. The Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, May 6th, 2014, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present except Chad Whirl, who was at the Human Resources Committee meeting. Also attending were Mayor Vruwink, Tim DeSorcy, Dave Batten, Callie Saly Steckbauer, and Chris Steckbauer. The meeting was called to order. There were no special beer license applications. Item three, an application for a Class B liquor and beer license filed by C&amp;C Steckbauer LLC, Callie Saly Steckbauer Agent, doing business at, doing business as Whiskey Rapids Saloon for the premises at 150 Second Street North. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Stack, to approve the application, motion carried. Item four, consider a recommendation from statewide services to deny a claim from David Jankovic for damage to the basement of his residence due to sewer drainage backup. It was moved by Stack, seconded by Dolan, to deny the claim, motion carried. We began a review of the 2014, 2015 liquor, beer, wine, and wine license applications. The committee began reviewing the applications. Beverage operator license applications. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Stack, to approve new licenses for the following applicants, motion carried. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Stack, to renew licenses for the following applicants, motion carried, the names follow. Item seven, audit of the bills. One note, there were no applications recommended denied by the police chief. Item seven, audit of the bills, voucher 54901 through 55269 were reviewed. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Stack, to approve the bills. Item eight, it was moved by Dolan, seconded by Stack, to adjourn, motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 5:15 PM. James Stack, chairman, Terry Dolan, secretary. And the Finance and Property Committee met this evening at 5:00 PM in the third floor conference room. Item one, call to order.
Jim, that was actually not on the agenda, Shane said, so it can't be.
Correct.
Next meeting, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would move for adoption of report number one.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, move into a vote, please cast your ballots.
Got it this time. Motion carried, eight As and zero As.
Next item, item eight B is Public Works Committee Meeting Held May 6th. Alderperson Rayom?
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, May 6th, 2014, in the first floor conference room in City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Kurt Hoyer, Dave Laspa, and Joe Ickstead. List of others present is on file in the clerk's office. Item number one was to call the meeting to order. Item two, request from Tracy Arnold of the Wood County Land Conservation Department to stencil the catch basins. Tracy was present for this item. There was a motion and a second to approve the stenciling of the catch basins that were proposed, and worked with city staff to locate additional catch basins to mark. That motion carried. Item number three, request from Tom Witt of Consolidated Water Power Company for a permanent limited easement on Kingston Road for the replacement of their power line at the CN Railroad. Tom was present for the item. There was a motion and a second to approve the permanent limited easement, that motion carried. Item four, request from Police Chief Kurt Hoyer to increase the lighting in the alley between Oak Street and Jackson Street. Chief Hoyer was present for the item. There was a motion and a second to replace the existing street light between KNW Glass and Paul Gross Jewelers in the alley with a 400-watt spotlight, and that motion carried. Item five, request from Alderperson Kellogg that modifications be made to Second Avenue to address safety concerns due to the speed limit increase. There was a motion and a second to proceed with the chip ceiling, relocated pavement marking as presented with city staff to make necessary and prudent changes that may be necessary, that motion carried. Item six, request to acquire right-of-way for sidewalk purposes on the west side of Fourth Street between East Jackson Street and Oak Street, and a preliminary resolution to install sidewalks on the west side of Fourth Street between East Jackson Street and Oak Street. Terry Johns was present for the, from the United Way, was present for this item. There was a motion and a second to recommend to acquire the right-of-way for sidewalk purposes on the west side of Fourth Street between East Jackson Street and Oak Street, and a preliminary resolution to install sidewalks. That motion carried, the resolution is attached with our minutes. Item seven, set the 2014 special assessment rates for sanitary sewer, water main, sanitary and storm laterals, water leads, curb and gutter, sidewalk, and permanent street surfacing. There was a motion and a second to approve the 2014 special assessment rates. That motion carried, and that's attachment one. Item eight, set the 2014 sidewalk grinding rate. There was a motion and a second to approve the 2000 sidewalk grinding rate, motion carried, and the rates are attached. Item nine, resolution approving North Central Wisconsin Stormwater Coalition Cooperative Agreement. There was a motion and a second to approve- There was a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Motion carried. That, uh, attachment two. Item 10, the review of the proposed 2014 Public Works Project Schedule. Committee reviewed the schedule. Uh, item 11 was to review, review the referral list. Uh, we removed items two, three, four, five, six, and eight of 2014. Item 12, there was a motion, uh, and a second to adjourn. The motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 7:25 PM. And with that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero As.
Item eight, see Human Resources Committee meeting held May 6th. Alderperson Whirl.
Thank you, Mayor. Fellow councilman, viewers at home. The Human Resources Committee met at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, May 6th, 2014, in the third floor conference room at City Hall. All committee members were present. All others present are on file in the clerk's office. We had four items this month. Item number one, we had a request from the fire chief for approval of out-of-state travel and training purposes for three employees. Two employees to attend a National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland, and one employee to attend certified EMS billing coder class in St. Louis, Missouri. There was a motion and a second to approve the request at a total cost of $1,140, which was budgeted. Uh, motion carried. Item two, a request from wastewater superintendent to hire a limited-term employee, LTE. There was a motion and a second to approve hiring an LTE, uh, who will fill in for an employee on leave. The term of employment will not exceed six months. Motion carried. Item three, request from public access coordinator to hire three interns to work on an as-needed basis and a full-time assistant producer, multimedia specialist, due to resignation. There was a motion and a second to hire three interns at minimum wage to work as-needed basis and a full-time multimedia specialist at $12 per hour, and that motion passed. Item four, the Human Resources Director provided a brief overview of the Human Resources Department, and no action was taken. There was a motion and a second to adjourn. The meeting adjourned at 5:40 PM. Motion carried. With that, I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes and place them on file.
We have a motion and a second. Move into discussion. Seeing no discussion, move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero As.
Item nine, miscellaneous reports. Item A is McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees, held March 19th. Item B, the City Treasurer's Monthly Report for March and April. Item C, the Airport Commission, held May 1st. Item D, Police and Fire Commission, held April 9th. Item E, Redevelopment Authority, held April 1st. Item F, the City of, uh, City Treasurer's Report on Investments for April. Item G, Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Monthly Organizational Summary for April. Item H, the Water Works and Lighting Commission, held April 9th. Item I, the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Monthly Report for April. Item J, the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Quarterly Report for January, February, and March 2014. And item K, Wastewater Treatment Commission Meeting, held May 7th. Council members, what are your wishes regarding those reports?
Move for adoption.
A motion is, and a second. Any discussion? Alderperson Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. Uh, for Chief Kirkman. You've got, uh, a, a nice list here of spring fire safety tips as well as barbecue grilling fire safety tips. Um, I mean, do you, do you put these out on the Facebook page? Or is there more ways that you get these out than just, uh, these public reports?
Exactly. We have it on our Facebook page also.
Okay. And of course, as always, the, uh, the call-in hotline for, uh, if campfires are permitted at that day, or?
Correct.
Excellent. That's all I had for you. Thanks.
Thanks.
Further discussion? Seeing none, move into a vote. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero As.
Item 10, items for new business at the June 17th council meeting. There's no items listed there. Item 11, ordinances. Item A is an ordinance dissolving the Telecommunications Advisory Commission, repealing the telecommunications ordinance, and addressing franchise fees. See attachments four and five. This item came from results, and maybe the city attorney would like to introduce, uh, maybe some history for council members on this item here.
Sure. Uh, this was the recommendation of the Telecommunications Commission, Commission a number of months ago. The 23-page ordinance that, uh, is in effect now, the 99% of that addresses franchise agreements with cable providers, and we are not able to, uh, do we have no control over those anymore? The franchises are now given by the state of Wisconsin, and the state controls all of, all of the items regarding franchising, including complaints. Um, so the commission or the city really has no control over, uh, all of the things that were in the ordinance, so this is more of a cleanup of that. And then also, um, dissolve, the commission was in this ordinance, and the commissioners, uh, had decided that, uh, and along with Tom Lough's Public Access Coordinator, had decided that it would be better served if he had some type of an advisory commission, uh, or, I'm sorry, an advisory group that he could rely upon that might not even necessarily be city residents, but just users or producers or, or people who had shows, um, to kind of give him some ideas on programming and, and things. As a commission, we were not meeting very regularly at all. And I think we just decided that since the franchising was taken away from us, um, and the complaint procedure is no longer valid regarding, you know, the city having any control, that we would, um, basically just delete the whole, uh, the whole ordinance. However, the, the one thing that would remain would be the franchise fees. I know everyone on the commission at least, and it has been the position of former council members that to retain that, uh, separate money, the franchise fee is going specifically to, uh, River Cities Community Access and not being placed in the general fund. So what was suggested is that the ordinance, uh, addressed that the franchise fee still would go to the budget of community access unless you specifically, the council specifically by resolution, uh, decides to use that money in a, in another way. And you have done that in the past. Uh, some of that money has been used for the renovations in this room. And I believe there was some, uh, money's allocated last year to go towards a, uh, possible new website for the city. So, um, that has happened in the past, but it's more just to retain that segregation of the funds and preserve those for community access. So that kind of explains it. If anyone has any questions?
Questions? Alderperson Rayo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Sue, how much, uh, does that generate in money? To refresh my memory, if, if you have that figure.
Whoops. I think it's about, uh, 230, 230,000 a year, approximately 240. I don't have their budget in front of me, but, um, I would say it's about 60,000 a quarter that we receive from the two providers, so 230 to 240. Oh, Tim probably has the number.
The 2014, uh, budget for franchise fees is 266,000.
Thank you. Um, just one, I guess, along with that is, um, you know, the fund, I, the funds should be kept separate, I think. But I guess to me, more in a, in a, uh, emergency or something that may be long-term for the council that they could look at to do. I wouldn't want to see that that becomes part of the, uh, budget to use for just general, to do the budget. It'd be for things, uh, for, uh, where it's put into or in an emergency or something that we could agree on to spend it. But not, not that it would be that we could use it to balance the budget at, at budget time. I, so I'm, I just want to say that, that's, uh, I would hope the council would go along with that, uh, when it comes that time. Um, so that's all I have.
Thank you. I think that's accounted for in, in attachment number four. Other discussion? Alderperson Stack.
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. Um, the funds that are raised, do they pay all the expenses of the, um, the fran, the media, River Cities Media now?
Correct. Yeah, and there's a surplus that's typically generated because the collections have exceeded, uh, expenses.
So at, at this time, we would have a collection in that fund. Uh, a surplus in that fund. And we're meeting all the expenses.
Right.
Needed.
Right.
Including those associated with the director and the staff.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, things needed for River Cities Media.
There's some consideration, I don't know if it's going anywhere, legislation for, uh, internet, uh, sales tax or tax to be generated on this as cable subscribers change in the future. FCC, I think, is looking at that right now. So it's another long-term consideration, but today it's, it definitely generates surplus.
All right. Thank you.
Other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move in, oh, Alderperson Kirkpatrick.
Uh, thank you. I, I just have to kind of echo what Tom was saying, that I think we should be careful and wise about the use of these funds as we go forward in the future. But I think, uh, we don't want to balance a budget, you know, to buy bench, park benches or something like that, obviously. But I think that, um, in the case, you know, we use some of that money, like you said, in the renovation of, of this hall here. And I think that uses like that are appropriate because that helps to go towards the heart of their mission. So, you know, I think we, if we are going to pull money out of that for a specific project, I think we should always keep in mind that that money is there for the, for, for that mission and the expenditure of that should reflect that, so.
And subsequently, their budget will now come to the council as opposed to going to this commission for, for their approval, which it would have done before, but one less step. Other discussion? For Patrick.
Just a question here. Do we have to address these separately, or can one motion be made covering both?
One could be made covering both. If it's all in one, or that's, yeah, and repealing, or that's need.
Okay. Mayor, if you have no other objections, I'd make a motion to approve item 11A, attachments four and five as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero As.
Next item on our agenda under ordinances. Item 11B is an ordinance changing the speed limit on Second Avenue South. Then that's attachment number six. By now, we're familiar with that, uh, piece. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that ordinance?
Motion to approve is presented.
The motion to approve, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Please cast your ballot.
Motion carried. Eight As and zero As.
Thank you. Uh, item 12, referral of communications to committees. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, I'll make note of the suggestion on the Highway 54 bypass piece that depending if that has any further action, uh, just for an FYI, maybe for the committee, Public Works Committee or something too.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, and we have a chicken ordinance coming forth as well. Uh, should be some lively, uh, debate on that subject, maybe at a future meeting. Livestock, yeah? Okay. Any other, uh, referral of communication to committees? All right. And then we'll move into item 13, adjournment. I entertain a motion to adjourn. The motions are second. Motion's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you all for being here, and we'll see you very soon.